Good evening, I'd like to call this special committee the whole meeting to order for Wednesday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Land acknowledgement, I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the traditional lands of Acadia First Nation, part of Mi'kmaqie, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Item number three, approval of the agenda, we have one agenda item, is there any additions or deletions? We delete it, then this meeting's done. If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda circulated, moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Nick Hilton. To move the agenda as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Just a reminder to everyone, if there's any recommendations this evening, this is only a committee of the whole. Just make the recommendation to move it forward to regular council for discussion and/or approval. All right, number four, old business, the reason why we're here today is to go over the boundary review, final report by CND Community Design, today we have with us Caroline. From CND Design, and we all have that in your package, and I'm going to turn the floor over to you, Caroline.
Perfect, so we've been working on the boundary review for the municipality. Since almost last January, so we're getting close to a year here of doing background analysis and reports and speaking with council and the public. So I'm just gonna give you high overview of where we're at now, so this, we're on the final stretch, this is our final report. We investigated the two scenarios that council requested, which was one maintaining kind of status quo, your seven districts. Seven councillors, warden system, and just looking for those, the parity alterations that would be required by the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board. And then the second option that you asked us to look into was a reduction to six councillors, so that would be six districts, and then the potential switch to a mayor system. So we did a lot of background analysis, we created a lot, we collected a lot of data analysis, and that's kind of how we came to the conclusions that we did when it came to. The boundaries that we are, that we were recommending and that we took to public consultation. When we went to consultation, we didn't have a huge response despite pushing it, and you know.
Very disappointing.
It is, and it's similar because we are working on boundary views for the municipality of the District of Shelburne, as well as the municipality of the District de Clare. Very similar, the best days we had were when we camped out. In a public place and just talked to people. So what, what we found. Well, first I guess I'll address the public engagement, I mean, it's frustrating, this happens with planning too, a lot. Unless someone feels like they're directly impacted, or they really understand what's being talked about. Or one person gets really riled up and brings a bunch of other people, it's really hard to engage people on kind of broader topics and concepts. And boundary reviews seem to be one of those things that are really difficult for people to understand, the whole concept of getting voter parity. Looking at the electors' numbers, the boundaries, how it affects municipal elections, getting people engaged in municipal elections and voting for municipal elections, like the whole thing just. Is complicated and difficult to get. A lot of response, but based on, based on the research that we did and the discussions that we did get to have, and coming back and forth and talking to you guys. You know, we feel that you could really move forward with either of the options. People generally just seemed satisfied, they were okay with the proposed boundaries for both scenarios. And felt that they'd be appropriate and fit based on our conversations we had. We also found that most of the community are pretty content with having the existing representation of seven councillors. And there seemed to be some appetite from the mayor-style governance and like interest if there was more information or more, like if it felt more imminent. As a decision that people might be more interested in hearing more and understanding how it would work. But generally speaking, we also heard really great things about your warden, which I think. When you have a great warden, someone that the community really, really likes, talking about switching to a mayor system is perhaps. Less. Necessary or imminent, or something that they want to talk about right now. So that's kind of how we felt from the conversations that we had. So the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board, they have a user guide that we've been following, and kind of how they, I have a quote in our report from, right from their user guide. And what it says is, you know, after completing that thorough background analysis and a public consultation program, which we've done. Then council may determine their application by informed debate. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I'm kind of wondering if council wants to sit down and just have those discussions, think about it, look at the data that we collected and decide how they'd like to apply. And, and I do just want to remind you that whatever decision you make, the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board. Does require a public hearing, which is advertised in the community as part of it, so there will be that additional step where the public would know what's going on. I think that, with that. I can open it up for discussion, and if you want to, if you have any specific questions about the report or want to get more in-depth, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. All right, I see Deputy Warden Trevor Cunningham's hand go up in here, so you're first.
So I reviewed the reports, the information you provided yesterday, actually, and. Looked through, and it was pretty thorough, and I agree with you, there's, there's, there's not a lot, like a lot of data in terms of. Sheer numbers and that type of thing to really base a decision on, but some things did sort of come out, I think, although it's probably not statistically relevant. Folks weren't in favor of having an additional councillor added, like seven and one. So even though that wasn't one of the two options that we talked about initially. You know, that, that, that may have been a consideration, but I think, you know, what, the two options we have on the table. I think those are both, seem to be both okay by the public, having a mayor and six councillors or seven councillors and a warden, same with a warden that is. Selected through, through the, through the election by council. Having said that. The public consult that, like if we were to go to a, maybe either Carolyn or Victoria, just in terms of. Process, if we were to go through, if we were to make a notice of motion tonight, for instance, for one or the other options and. And, you know, we remove that, or we remove that to regular council. After that regular council meeting, we require a public meeting, would we, to get additional feedback? Is that it before we made a decision? I'm not certain, I'm totally clear with the process.
Well, it depends on what the motion is, so if you're. Looking at making your decision through your boundary review, you file your wishes with UARB, and they handle the engagement process and they make a ruling. On what you file with them. If you want to separate the two and file with UARB, for example, for status quo and complete the requirements for the boundary review. But think about governance and do something different, then you can lead your own engagement.
Okay. Yeah, but we've already, but just to follow up, we've already really had our own engagement process to this point.
A type of engagement, yes, yep. So just to summarize, and Caroline, fill in any gaps that I might create. So engagement included an online survey, paper surveys, there were drop-ins at a local retail establishment. And there were comment cards, and there was a town hall style meeting.
Oh, sorry, I'm not sure if I'm muted or not, I'm on mute. Yes, and we, there was, it was advertised in the newspaper as well, it was shared a lot on social media, where we tried to push it that way. Because it has to do with politics, we weren't able to pay to promote the posts, which I think. Might have hindered that approach a little bit on us. Yeah, so that was how, that was the extent of the engagement that we had agreed upon when we began the process.
All right, is there any more comments on the floor?
I have my hand up, John.
Oh, I didn't see that, go ahead, Lauren.
I figured you seen it. Correct me if I'm wrong. And I apologize if I don't understand it properly. But it seems to me that. Joe Public is pretty satisfied with the way things are right now, and if that's the case, why do we want to change it? Am I right on that, or? Caroline, I guess.
Um, I don't know that we got enough engagement to be able to make that, that full.
Okay, in, in, in expanding on that, if we never got enough engagement on that subject. To me. To me, it seems like. If people were really interested in engaging in this exercise, that they would have. Because they never, then I, then I can only. In my, in my way of thinking, is that they're satisfied with what we have right now. That's, that's my thinking, so if they were really concerned about something, I think you mentioned it, that if, if there was, and we've seen this. Example is the same in front, all of a sudden we got a few people that were really against it, really rallied around, got a lot of people. To, to go against it, right, so. There wasn't, there wasn't that rally. From anybody. In this type of session that would, that would, that we done, that really. Really supported any type of change. So if there was, if there was a rally. If they wanted to change, it would have been a rally by someone or some group. And there's obviously going to be a group who want to push their own agenda, and. And it certainly wasn't this time, so I'm pretty comfortable just leaving things the way they are. Thank you. Hey, Daniel had his hand up, John. Yeah, I'm mute.
I see Nick first and Daniel.
Okay.
Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, no worries. Yeah, I have to tend to agree that the sample size probably isn't enough to change that, and like Lauren said. If they, if people wanted to be engaged when they heard about it, they would have been. I think change costs money as well, we're a council that likes to spend. On things that. On community-related things, and I, and I don't see this being something that needs to change, so I didn't vote in favor of it when we kind of. Were sending it to Caroline to investigate, and I'm probably still not in favor of it now. And I have read the review, and I know that, you know, really it changes my district more than anything, the way it's presented. That's not the reason I feel this way. I like that, you know, town has a mayor. Think it would be complicated at every event to have the mayor of the town in Yarmouth and the mayor of the municipality of Yarmouth. The warden has a lot of respect, and I'm good with status quo.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. That really, that was really well said, Nick. I agree with Nick. I believe that when it comes to municipal politics right now, I mean, obviously when it comes to any kind of politics, trust, trust from the people is really hard to get. But I think when it comes to municipal politics, people like to know that when they pick up the phone to call whoever represents them or someone from the municipality. It doesn't matter who it is, that somebody's going to answer. My experience so far in the last six years has been. Every councillor around this table answers the phone and, and does what they can. I, 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 I'm like Nick, whatever we choose, I mean, obviously, you know, we'll, we'll make it work. I realize we've got to do some parity around some of the zones, and that's just the way it is, and that's just adding a few people to some and taking some away. But I'd like to believe that, even if that happens, that hopefully those people in those little spots that may have to. Maybe represented by a different councillor can realize that they can still call the person they know. I, for one, like, you know, if, if people have a problem and they know someone, then call them. As long as, as long as it gets to council and it gets solved, it's all that matters, so. And I, I'll echo it, I just think we have a good bunch, and I think that gets done, and I agree with Nick when it comes to spending in the communities and stuff, I think we are, we are doing. I mean, as good a job as can be done with what we have to spend, so. For me, I don't know if it's possible, but right now, I'd almost like to make a motion that we send this to regular council recommending that. We just proceed with the population change, I don't know if that's the word for it, but leave. The council as a seven-member warden. Warden represented. Situation.
Right motion on the floor, I see in a second by councillor Patty Durkey, I believe you put your fingers up.
No, I actually wanted to say something, but I can, I can second that too, but I do want, and it's open for discussion, which is fine.
All right, so there was a motion moved by councillor Daniel Allen to move forward the status quo.
I'll, I'll second that.
It's a regular council, seconded by councillor Patty Durkey. Councillor Allen, you still have the floor before opening up to councillor Durkey.
No, no, I'm, I'm good, I'm good, Mr. Warden, thank you very much.
All right, councillor Durkey.
Okay, I, I am actually going to agree with Lauren that. That if people were really concerned about that, about our situation with the boundary view, that they, more people would have participated. I firmly believe that as well. The question is that they, when they see that there's going to be a boundary view. Did they really understand that we were looking at two systems? Because a boundary view doesn't really say that, that the municipality is considering. You know, two different options, so Caroline, question through the warden to you, was it advertised as such that we were? Was it just, this is a boundary review, or was it, this is a boundary view with consideration of two, two options?
It's a boundary review with consideration of two options, it's a lot of text to keep it accurate. I don't like, I mean, like I said, and when I started the conversation, when. First of all, most people don't even know what a boundary review is.
Well, that's, that's my concern.
We spent a lot of time, when, when we did get to speak to people in person, explaining what a boundary review was. How it would affect them, and then a lot of people didn't fully understand the maps, when we talked about districts, we'd have to, they'd like show us where their house is, and we'd show them how the boundaries worked. And, and then the idea of like parity and doing the calculations based on number of electors in each area, and making sure that the average. Is within a certain percentage, I had, you know, explaining that to the public was, was the next step. And then, you know, the kind of the last thing we talked about was the governance structure. So you know, if we managed to keep their attention that long, that's when we got to that point.
So that would be my concern, is that people didn't understand that we were looking at two options for governance. But you said there was, like in the advertising, did it, did it say that?
It always had the two scenarios, so reduction to six councillors and switch to a mayor system was always advertised as part of it.
Then I'm confident that, that, as long as people understood that that was being considered. Under the circumstances, do, do I necessarily like that, that, you know, we, we are seven people and we have to choose someone to lead us? That's not an easy task, and. I, you know, no, no offense, I don't intend it to anybody, but it's just, it's, it's challenging because. In the past, I know with Leland, he went around and, and talked to everybody and said, you know, vote for me, and I've got the most experience and blah, 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 blah. And just because you, you're on for the longest time doesn't mean you're the best quote-unquote leader, and I'm not aiming this at you, John, I'm just saying in general. So you know, if you, and, and when someone new comes on, so if you've got a bunch of, like, I didn't, like, the first time around, I didn't know any of you. And so here I'm being asked to pick a leader, and I don't know anybody, so, you know, so to me, that, that's, that's a challenge with. With, with the warden side of things, when you don't know, you guys, many of you knew each other, and I came in totally cold, so, you know, there's. How do I know who to pick, right? Thankfully, that there were, it was different the second time around. But, so that, that to me is, is one of the issues with seven people choosing their warden. But to compliment John, he never, you know, he said he was running, but he didn't, not that I know of. Tried to manipulate people, right, so that, that's a, that's a very positive scenario, it was. That being said, if people aren't going to say, oh yeah, we need to change, we need to change, I mean, the one thing that people. Would like to see, a number of people, and many don't, is consolidation, and that's not on the table at the moment, so. I know I'm talking too long here, I would, I think I, my option would be to stay with the present system as we have it.
I'm going to speak after the deputy warden, the deputy warden, you can have the floor, and I'm going to speak, and I want everyone to speak freely, I've always said that, speak what's on your mind. And I do appreciate that, and after deputy warden's done speaking, I'll say a few words.
I've talked to a few people at length in the community, a couple of my electors actually, and. And I haven't gone out and talked to a lot of people because we had the process in place, and, you know, just in conversation. And actually, most of the folks I've talked to, which hasn't been a lot, we're in favor of sort of having a mayor, and. Although that's, again, such a small sample size, that's the issue, right, like, you know, maybe we may have already had a conversation with a few people, you know. And, you know, just in casual conversation, because they know it's out there and they talked to him about it, but. Yeah, that's a small group. Both systems have advantages and disadvantages, obviously, I think Patty did talk about one of the advantages, and obviously. You know, we, we were a small group and people to elect a warden and a deputy, and. You know, while I think, I think that, that works in lots, and you can have, it is a very small group of people making that choice. And generally, my philosophy would be that, I think many others, is it's probably better. From, from that stance to elect a mayor, because everybody gets to have a say, right, and it doesn't create that. Those dynamics, not that we have those here now, but it guards against the possibility of having those dynamics on. On council where you, where you have an election and folks are, are, you know, electing a mayor and deputy wardens, or wardens or a deputy warden. But any event, I'm, I'm okay with, you know, I think my preference personally would be for a, for a mayor. For those reasons, and the mayor's a little bit more prominent in the community, that type of thing, but there are disadvantages too, and. You know, we don't have a groundswell of people, you know, talking against having a mayor or for having a mayor. So I, I guess my issue is, is that we really, despite the best efforts of Carolyn and staff, and. You know, we really don't have a good feel for what people are thinking, right, I mean, there's been some. Short conversations and super marks and that type of thing, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't. You know, to turn over every stone, I know the hour's late on this, if we shouldn't send, you know, do, do a thorough survey. Of the community, you know, random, where you send out. You know, a detailed survey, the background, almost like we did with the Mariners Center project, of course, we had some issues with that, but. But it would be just with our residents, obviously, it's only concerning ours, so I'll put that out there for, for thought, because at the end of the day. At the end of the day, no matter which way we go, we really don't have a firm handle on what the community believes about this, which is for me problematic.
All right, I'm going to go next, and then I see councillor Lauren pushing you head your hand up, so I'll go next. I, I will say this, there's advantages, as many of you pointed out, and disadvantages to a, to mayor all system, and I'll tell you what I hear on the street, and I also too am disappointed at the small sample size. I've heard a lot throughout the community over the past two years of my term as warden, and even before this, that people wanted to elect their mayor. And councillor Durkey had touched on this, that a new councillor coming in, they're all of a sudden barraged by. By senior members of council that wants to be warden, and I find my own personal experiences, is it. Sets a council off on the wrong foot, whereas a mayor is elected at large throughout the community. Now, one of the large disadvantages of a mayor all system is it costs money to run campaigns, and it would put someone who, who would be. A good candidate at a disadvantage if they had no backing. It, it costs money to run a campaign. I know roughly how much it cost me, my first term, my first term is, I had seven people running, and then it cost me roughly twenty-five hundred dollars. Now, if I had to run a municipality-wide campaign, that would, that would be up three-fourfold. It would leave a lot of people out of the running, and everyone sitting on our council today would make a great warden, as far as I'm concerned. I have no doubt of that, but I'm really disappointed that we didn't have a larger sample size. I'm glad to hear that people are pleased with the way that the system is running now, the ones that did respond, but I do hear. Out there that they wish that they could elect. Their, their leader of the municipality, rather than the councillors pick their own. I do hear that quite a bit, and I hear that from, from prominent people, and I also hear that from people outside of my district where I was elected District One. There's pros and cons, I'd be in favor of the motion that's put forward, I just wish that we had a little bit bigger sample size to really get. The, the true feel of the municipality. Councillor Question, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It's interesting that people are saying that they, they've talked to people or heard from people saying that they'd like to be able to, if you left a mayor at large. And to be very truthful with you, I have very few. I've had very few people have ever approached me and talk about such. The people I talk to are satisfied with what's going on, there's certainly a lack of trust in, in, in government in general, right? But councillor Durkey brought up how people manipulate people to, to, to. Do. To go through their concerns or through their agenda, and again, I'll bring up the salmon farm thing, I didn't listen to. What the people were trying to manipulate me to, to vote against it. I, I made my decision on what I realized is a, the impact on the fishing industry itself. You know, I don't be, I'm not manipulated by people, I, I try to use what I feel is, is in the best interest of the people who. Who elected me number one, and number two for the, for the municipality of Yarmouth. And for number three, Yarmouth County as a whole, and that's the way I've always looked at things. And I never tried to manipulate people to try to say, you should vote for this person or that person, or you should vote. This way or that way, I've never done that, and I never will do that, but I let people try to make up their mind, but. As we've seen, you know, and I'll go back to that salmon farm thing, we had a group of people that were, did against it, I was against it, you know, no, no question there. But it wasn't because of what people were saying, but it was kind of what I thought about the fishing industry. That was my way, I made my decision on that, I keep bringing that up, but that, that was a, that was a very. that was a very um, I hope I can choose my words right this time. On that uh, I think that was a good example how a group of people, oh, and, and there's another one too, and I'll bring up. Um, how a group of people can, can influence other people to vote a certain way or to feel a certain way on things, right? And another case was Mariners on Main. That was another one. We had a group of people who really, really, really pushed to, for us to, to, to support that. And again, I wasn't really against it. All I wanted to know was cost. Right? So uh, and I guess we, we see what the cost is now. The cost is, is pretty extravagant what we're paying. But uh, you know, so I try not, I, I'm not influenced by the way people try to manipulate me. I try to, try to deal with the, with the surroundings uh, from what I hear and and from my experience, my experience in the world. I've been around for 70 years and I've, I've, I've got a lot of experience underneath my belt, which I, I try to uh, I try to use in my decision making. Thank you.
I, I. Counselor Allen and Counselor Durkey.
I was going to say, I thought I read your lips, Mr. Warden, and you said Alan, so. Um, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I don't know if either one is completely right or wrong. And I'll say it again, I'm like the rest of you, disappointed in the, in the sample size, but sometimes, sometimes silence is golden. It was advertised, there was opportunities. I don't believe we have to go any farther. This is what we hired C and D to do. I think they've done a thorough job. Um, I have, so I, I agree, there's always concerns about um, the council having to pick the warden and the deputy warden. We'd still have to pick a deputy warden regardless. And one of my concerns with the mayoral system, I guess, would probably be, it would almost be like party politics, a- again, to the point that that um, the warden said, you know, if, if you can raise the money to run the better campaign and um, sometimes you may get someone with no experience could possibly step in, throw their name in the hat and win the mayoral race. And I just believe that hopefully, you know, anyone that runs for council has some idea, well, they, yeah, I know I didn't have really any idea what I was getting into, so. But have some idea of with talking with other counselors, who has some ideas to what's going on and, and you know, can maybe find their way. So I've just, I don't think we're going wrong either way, but just by the sample size, um, it shows what come out. I don't think it's advertising. I just think it's, we're, we're grassroots politics and if things are going good in the community and people are happy, let's keep them happy. So that's, that's pretty much where I'm at. And I'll, I'm going to stand by my motion and I will be voting to send it to council.
Counselor Durkey.
What I said was, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I was muted. Um, I'm not against the, the mayoral system. Um, I think it does have its merits. Um, and I, and there are people too who have said to me, yes, I think that's a, a better way. Um, and, and people have even suggested that we all run at large as opposed to uh, being in districts. But uh, under the present circumstances, um, with, with the, the study that was done, um, that's where my my vote is lying. It's not that I wouldn't consider it. But I just, at this time, I just don't think we have enough evidence to show that that would be um, of huge benefit. And, and that's what people want. I just, I, not that I wouldn't want it. I think it's a good idea too, but it's just under the present circumstances. I'm not prepared to go in that direction.
Counselor Hilton, uh, please excuse the background noise. My dogs are barking at the door. Hold on.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, I'm still, I'm still good with it. I think, um, we talked about maybe surveying some more people, but uh, I think Daniel summed it up properly. Silence is golden. It was advertised. Um, this isn't necessarily one of where I want to spend my time um, for the next few months. Um, I feel like, um, the conclusion was that both uh, both options were valid. Um, but um, there's just not enough to make that change. So um, uh, I'm in favor of Daniel's motion as well. Um, just one question for Caroline, does, by moving this to council in, in his motion, he talks about the boundaries that were presented. Does that make them? Does that make them? Is this, does that make them set? Like, is this where we'll be moving the boundaries to the next election? Because I, I think uh, maybe Counselor Herbert had a couple of questions for you related to that.
Yeah, so these were the boundaries that we, we talked about um, and presented at council, um, Raleigh and Derek put together. And then when we went to public consultation, these are the ones that we presented to the public and uh, one of the questions we asked was if they were impacted by the alterations based on where they lived and if they were comfortable with the changes. And for the most part, we found that, that uh, that everybody was comfortable with, with the parity alterations that, that we proposed. So yes, if you, if you make a motion, it, it, it would stick with these one, with what we've, we've gone through the process with.
I mean, it's just a recommendation to council anyway, so she hopefully will be present to, to voice any further concerns. I'm assuming you present at council as well. Would be my guess.
If you'd like to. I, it's totally up to you guys.
You've had enough as well. Okay, perfect.
Okay, Counselor Allen and Deputy Warden.
Yes, so, sorry for speaking a third time, uh, Deputy Warden. Um, yeah, to next, to next point, I know when we had the first, when they came in and did the presentation the first time on the boundary reviews, there were some questions about some roads that Counsel Herbert had. And I was just wondering, did those get changed between then and now? Between, so, so it's not the same, it's not actually to, to Counselor Hilton's point, it's not actually the same boundary reviews we've seen at the first presentation. Some of the concerns that Counselor Herbert had, they probably looked into. So, but I, you know, if it's, it's just a recommendation to Counselor Hilton's point, so if we get there and the bound, and Counselor Herbert has some, I'm, you know, we can work, I'm sure we can work that out.
Yeah, so you can alter, you, I mean, you can, you can make a motion and alter those boundaries again if you, if you wanted. Um, uh, for, before we do the application, uh, based on what the background information you've had yet. But I know Raleigh spoke to Counselor Herbert for a long time and uh, he did his best to try and address her concerns and also to um, some community members who lived in the area and to address them as well. So the, the boundaries had, he did change the boundaries slightly. Um.
Okay, yeah, because, because that ba- that boundary affects me, like it, it affects too and at the time, it was affecting myself and Counselor Herbert and she had some really valid, valid points and stuff. So I was just making sure that they'd been hurt. Okay, thank you.
Deputy Warden.
Yeah, just quickly, I, I, I'll, I'll vote for the motion today to move it forward to council, but I'm not certain, I haven't made up my mind if I will be able to support the motion at um, at regular council. Just, and I understand, you know, everybody wanting to move it along, but I, I, I'm, I'm really concerned about the feedback we've gotten and the, and, and the amount of it. That, that, you know, I, I just don't think there's enough information that we gathered despite the best efforts of, of our staff. Um, you know, I, I, for, for those reasons, I, I haven't made up my mind, I may not vote for it. I, I mean, I think, think that there's advantages and disadvantages. I, I may favor the, based on what I've heard, the, the mayoral system to an extent, but uh, but again, I can see people voting either way, but I'll be voting in affirmative uh, today. Something to move it along and, and I'll have to think about a little bit more of the whole thing, but you know, I, I, I um, understand everybody's point of view and, and just, I just don't, if I were to vote against it at the regular council, it would simply be, be because I don't think that we, we've done enough to, to hear from the public. That's all.
CEO Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just want to share a couple of things with respect to process and legislation uh, with council. So um, in May, um, C and D Community Design presented an, an initial um, look at seven districts with the parity rules. Um, because the, the rules around the boundary review have very specific requirements in terms of uh, population parity, communities of interest, things like that. So in May, you were presented with some maps and there were a few concerns and um, the team at C and D Community Design had some conversations. There was a discussion at Community Hall in May. We went away and C and D did some work and in July, we came back to council with the revised maps and received direction to go and consult the community based on those revised maps, which are the maps that are in your package for tonight. So as I understand it, when the District of Yarmouth makes its filing with the U A R B, one of the things the U A R B is going to look at is, was the community consulted on what you file? So if there are further adjustments to the map and we have it consulted, I don't know what the board may or may not do with that. I don't know. Um, and we have to file by December. That's in, that's in the legislation and the regulations we have to file by December. And I just want to, uh, because Counselor Durkey raised a really interesting question and I do just want to clarify for the record uh, with respect to um, counselors being elected at large. So in um, regional municipalities, in district municipalities and in county level municipalities, under current legislation, there have to be districts that can't be at large.
I'm sorry, I seem to be having trouble with my mute button tonight. Me not hitting it, that's the first thing. Is there any more discussion on the motion on the floor?
Question.
Question being called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe that motion was carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council. Now that comes the end of our agenda. And anyone that may have noticed that my face was lighting up, I have the uh, C and D report on another computer, so. Trying to multitask, which I don't do very well, obviously, because I kept forgetting to unmute my mic. All right, uh, I guess since that's the end of our agenda, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Hilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Very good discussion.